And I gotta do the caption.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're live.
Hey, I will now call to order the March thirteenth, twenty twenty five, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Administrative Secretary Sean Fei, please call the hall.
Sure, Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Everett Pearson.
Here.
Vincent Meeker.
Here.
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, is there any public comments, Tom?
Uh, none was submitted and no one is waiting in the queue.
Okay, um, then we'll close the public comment period with no one being here. Does anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda? Then we'll keep going to the next item. Um, approval of the minutes of February thirteenth, Board of Trustees Meeting.
Motion.
Any other questions or comments?
Second that.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, can we just take the roll, Sean?
Sure, Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Everett Pearson.
Yes.
Vincent Meeker.
Yes.
Uh, Kenneth Gross.
Uh, I was not here, so.
That's right. And Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, the motion carries.
Um, of course, it's moving along, okay, uh, volunteer appreciation recognition event. Uh, which is very exciting, um, I think we have updates for everyone if, uh, you don't know, like, wanna share some more, man?
Sure, um, or Kathy, do you wanna start?
No, go ahead, I haven't even read your email yet, okay, um, so we're changing the date to April fifteenth. Because originally we had decide, or we had landed on Thursday, but because of the farmer's market, it's April fifteenth, Tuesday. Um, four thirty to six, thank you Dean for your connection to Dean at Burden of Proof. Um, so Dean from Burden of Proof, who's one of the co-owners, he's gonna donate, um, a bunch of mocktails. Uh, for the event, which is really nice, um, we also contacted the high school. Uh, music director who's really great and he's been trying to get us in contact with some youth. To do, uh, string quartet at the event, they actually said yes, but I haven't been able to confirm with them, just. One student has confirmed and then we're waiting for the other three, but the music director was meeting with them today. So he was gonna check in with them, so they would come and play for about an hour at the event. The library can provide a fifty dollar per person honorarium, which is nice.
Which we just need to, and we can facilitate, they'll need to do a W nine with all their little kids. And like a invoice, so we could monk that up.
Okay.
If that was helpful for them, so you could put the kids in touch with Sean.
Okay.
Whatever works, but those two things in order to get them.
Okay, perfect, um, and then. What's the other piece, the food that I just wanted to kind of update folks on and get thoughts on is. We were thinking like some light snacks like charcuterie along with the mocktails. I am getting quotes, um, but we could also make it, which is maybe ambitious, but I think it would save on cost quite a bit. Um, but I sent some pictures along, um, to. There are small business charcuterie places that does cups, like individual cups for folks to pick up, or they just do grazing tables. Um, and depending, I think if we're about at like fifty dollars, yeah, like we did this for the school once and it's. Really easy to make, you just order cups, you can get a library sticker and stick it on there. Um, or little desserts and different things to do, so I'll get quotes, but you know, we can also make it, and by we.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and we have decorations too though, right?
So it's a lot.
It is a lot, so we can get quotes and see where we're at. Um, and then last year for decorations, I think we did some flowers, but we could see what else is needed. And then I know Kathy ordered, ordered some stuff for giveaway.
Yeah, I actually was just thinking about that today, cuz they haven't come, I'm sure they're, you know, like from China, but I have to see what's going on with those. Um, when I haven't had a chance, but I'm gonna check.
Yeah.
Yes, we have some. Like, hope bag, they're cute.
They're good, yeah.
Yeah.
What's our April meeting date?
The week before that, I think.
It is, okay. So we had to do some assigning with.
Yeah, we have one little window, right, yeah, we'll meet on the Thursday, we have a weekend, I mean.
I'm happy to help too, I know you're like, oh, the friend, I'm happy to add, if you guys need a little.
Yeah.
I'll be at that.
You're one of the volunteers though, so you should be.
Sure, but it's also like, a lot of those volunteers also come from our organization, so I'm happy to pitch in a little bit. But not very hard to, for the amount of hours they put in.
Yeah.
So if, if next meeting, you guys are like, there's one task that won't get done.
But you're a volunteer.
I know, I know, but I'm not gonna complain. I'm not gonna be that volunteer that's like, hey, I'm a volunteer and I volunteered for this appreciation event, so just. And we can table that, we can off order it when you. If you guys are like, there's one thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will let you know.
Yeah. We have some time beforehand, that afternoon, right?
Yeah, yeah, but I am getting quotes for the food, um, and I think we can do something light and see, um. See if the dates went out.
Uh, no, they haven't, but they will.
Okay, okay.
That's tomorrow, I'm gonna, we're gonna do obviously an email, but normally we print one too, so I have to get that done tomorrow. And then work on the brochure. Right, with the ad hoc committee stuff.
Yeah, I know it's rather, it's a, a little late, but I know Jones is always donating our coffee for. Um, our restoration concerts, so if you're trying to.
Yeah, some people might like coffee, yeah.
But I just remember, last year was a little earlier, but I remember you did the kind of coffee setup and that was.
Which is also easy to do ourselves, right, I mean, we can also do tea and coffee.
But they give you a whole little.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've done that with us.
I just throwing that up there, they've been so nice with the restoration concerts, they loaded in Janet's car and, you know.
Yeah, we can reach out to them. Um, anything else, Annie?
No, I think, um, probably just the invites and then, uh, we can work on the agenda together, Kathy, after the. Um, maybe between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
And share a little bit of an agenda. See what Sean's, Sean has updates about tables and whatnot, so. Um. They have ten, we're talking to community services about borrowing their stuff rather than renting. They have ten cocktail tables, um, standing tables, they have tons of round five foot tables. Which is kind of nice, I think we've had six, which is sort of like almost too big or something, so we were thinking sort of a mix. Um, do you guys have a sense of what that mix should be, I mean, we don't know how many people will be coming. Sean, do you have, um, a count on kind of the invite list that we would, we would send to? Have you, had, have you?
Yeah, I think I, I received about seventy, uh, people's hours, so.
So it's like seventy plus thirty people, um, so.
Yeah.
We just need to decide how many, what combinations seating and standing.
I think that, given the. Skew towards older in the volunteers, we probably wanna make sure we have plenty of seated students.
So if it's an eight person table. Eight times.
Five of them?
Five is.
That way half of our expected people have a seat and.
Mm-hmm, okay, so we'll figure it out, we can, you know, have, it's fine to have extra cocktail tables standing around.
Yeah, okay.
Um, let's see, what else did Sean say, he says.
I think it's the tablecloths.
Oh, that's, I know, I'm trying to, okay, uh, sure, okay, so, um, management services has ten to twelve. Black tablecloth and they are fitted for the large tables, but when they use them for the cocktail tables, they just fold them in half. So, we might need, need more than twelve though, we'll figure it out, so we, we basically will either. Uh, borrow those, or rent them, or add, buy a couple extras so that we have enough, so it looks like we're good. We're good on.
And they have chairs too.
We have, we, we just get our. Um. For like napkins and all that kind of stuff, we usually order that, so you guys will just, you know. Let me know what we think we want, you know, we can make the napkins cute or, you know, part of our scheme. Um, is that everything, Sean, that I was on here that I should share?
I think so, and, and I stand corrected, I, I received hours from sixty-one volunteers.
Is that all we send it to, is the people you receive hours from?
I think we expand out, but that's usually.
Um, is there, are friends with us?
No, we got requested to give hours, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If there's anybody that, we're pretty thorough about, so, but yes, I mean, everybody that's quote unquote a volunteer is. Gonna contribute, and if they don't send their hours in and Sean reminds them, reminds them, we still invite them.
Okay. Um, so then you're gonna work on the program with the updates, right, of like the facts of.
Yes, I already wrangled the right names for restoration concerts, the right names for the bookstore. So it's just some of these factoids, um, about what went on last year, but I have. You know, your end of year financials, I have, I think I have. I have everything it needs.
Yeah, and then I guess I'm, I giving you last year's roster, technically.
I have all of that, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, um, the, uh, was gonna ask you guys about, do we want to, did the person who donated the. Thousands and thousands of dollars for the piano fund wants to be anonymous, or?
I think that they, they have. Wanted to remain.
Okay, I was gonna check on that, but oh, it might be.
Yeah.
Need to say, oh, look what they've accomplished, but if they, we get to say.
That we've established, yeah.
All right, I'll check it, who should I talk to about how much Kim, Kim seems to like, she knows all.
Yeah, well, it's, it's more, it's Janet.
Okay, okay, Janet.
It's Janet for sure.
Yeah, the, the only thing about last year's. Um.
It's more just like the, what, what is the language we wanna be using, is really, I think, the particular thing that.
I'll tag with Janet.
Yeah.
Um, last year's, uh, program did not recognize the restoration people correctly. I don't know what I was up to, but, I mean, there were, the people were there, but it wasn't, I don't think it said like, they have this many concerts, so they did this. Some things, yeah, not exactly.
If you need any of those facts, you can totally reach out.
We have a number.
For me and, and Betty's now the chair of that committee, and she seems super just on it, so.
Okay, so yeah, that's, that's, I think everything from our end, um, just if, if I, you know. Water, soda, lemonade, whatever I need to buy, like we can easily. Go buy that. Ice, you know, we can go do that.
Okay, okay, yeah, good, thank you for being.
Thank you.
For being just together, hopefully it was a little easier this year, it's kind of still the same, but hopefully a little bit less of a left.
Uh, way easier, yeah, I mean, right, like since we decided we're not gonna write a twenty page. You know, catalog, and they try to make stuff up to fit in there, makes a big difference. I wanna try to, I mean, I know the idea was, you know, just leave the brochure or the program alone, but I don't want it to be. You know, I don't want it to be exactly the same, so I have to see what I can do to make it look nice. But, yeah.
Any other questions or thoughts on the voluntary group?
Are there, are there any like special speakers, it was so nice last year when we had a.
Did we have a city?
Mayor came.
Oh, we have a mayor come.
And talk, and that seemed so nice, I don't know if there's any here.
That mayor's in I'm a game at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
And that just seemed, gave, it was my first event, but that having some kind of, I don't know, and you get, you. But that, the having some, having that speaking component, I thought was really nice, I don't know if that's part of your programming, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, we had, you know, we moved away from like the paid speaker, but I thought that. Your, your comments last year were really heartfelt and people were moved, and so I, I think that's nice, it's a board.
Yeah.
Mayor Ron would be able to attend.
Yeah, I need to send all these, uh, save the dates to these folks, so, um.
Do all the city council members get invited?
Yeah, okay, cool, yeah. We invite, uh, state council members, we invite other department heads, um. We'll have a new city manager, who I'm assuming will try, would try to attend. Um, the other piece of this that we should bring up is the, um, so originally we were gonna have the event. Uh, the day after the council meeting, so the council meeting is the day that they would do the proclamation for volunteer. Um, recognition, so that'll be now happening after the event itself, but I thought, oh, you know, it could be kind of nice if. Um, we take some nice pictures and I can make a little slideshow to put up when we do the proclamation instead of just. You know, it'll show like all the volunteers, if we can get decent pictures, so.
But captive audience to announce it, hey, right, in two days, come to the.
Well, the next, or the, the next day.
With the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will send out emails saying, can people please come, cuz yeah, it always looks kind of weird if.
A couple.
Yeah, you're like.
Some, some big thing.
I also wanted to ask about, um, language and whether you, we think we should be thinking about volunteer appreciation. Instead of recognition, something I was thinking about.
Is it recognition right now?
It's recognition, we do our awards and everything, and now we're really more about.
Yeah.
Appreciating you, right?
Yeah, appreciation, you know, I get it.
Yeah, all right, let's, let's.
Do you think we can do an invite to the mayor to speak, um, specifically for everyone, just?
Yeah, make her do that, you know what she could talk about, if she, well, yes, I. I just had an idea that I was like, oh, maybe. Yeah, yes, I can see if she wants to do that, or we definitely can do that.
And then if not her, maybe, um, our council liaison or someone else.
Oh, yeah.
Council to like, you know, I feel like they, they would appreciate, right?
They're volunteers, yeah, it's like, kind of like, oh, whoa, you know, we're really.
To come.
They're pretty paying attention to us, so.
Yeah.
The other thing we thought we would do, um, so the bags that we got are, um, they look like old tiny checkout cards, you know. With the thing, the date, so like we do those for gifts, like for people who are retiring or something, we get like fabric markers. So you can like write in, you like visualize it with your name or the name of a book you like, so we maybe will put just like. Fatted markers out in case people wanna do create it. I was trying to find like the title of a book that flies, thank you, or appreciation that, that could be on there, but I. Anyway, so, well, that could be fun, I mean, put those out.
Yeah.
It could be a thing they have to do.
Yeah.
You have to put your favorite book on and then.
We can do it.
And a name.
So you can do it as part of the program, so like, it's like a.
Icebreaker.
Icebreaker is, you can write it up, you know, talk with your neighbor. And so then that kind of.
And that's what that little button felt like, when I was sitting at the tables, everyone was like, oh, what is your button, and then like, it was like a moment of like. Trading buttons, so it did feel very much like an icebreaker at the last years though.
I mean, you don't have to, if you don't wanna write on your bag.
Yeah.
Don't write on your bag, but, no, it's like, what book do you love, and write it down. Um, okay, let me make this one, any other ideas?
I think there's still time for more ideas next time.
Yeah, actually, that's, so, it will be close, so in terms of the date of and setup, do you guys need help, you know. Who needs to help and volunteer, who can be here?
Yeah.
Dean, I know you said you might, if, if there's something else you have going on, Kenny, you're probably at work.
Yeah, but I could probably do it by then.
Okay, so maybe we can communicate.
Okay.
You know, we, what we need from people.
Yeah.
Email or something, but just be prepared, we might, if you're available, we might have you.
Ooh, I have one quick question, um. If I, if it, when I go pick up the drinks from Burden of Proof, um, because they have to be at the shop, is there some place I can store them here?
Yes, are they?
It's not very many, I think that he said like six bottles of wine, a case of this like phony Negroni.
What, what has to be, all of it has to be refrigerated?
I don't think it needs to be refrigerated, I think we should get tubs and ice them before the event.
Okay, well, we can, you know, whenever you pick it up, we'll, we'll put as much in the fridge as we can and keep it cold, and then, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have tubs?
I don't, you don't.
I have tubs, yes.
Yeah, just let us know when you're coming, probably the, it easiest to drive up the back driveway. And come in the staff entrance and load, we'll load it onto the cart and move it upstairs.
And then, I don't know, I don't know if anyone can stay to help clean up, I don't wanna make all the staff do it, I'm sorry, I can't, we have a ban.
I can.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you.
It's no problem.
Okay. Great. Um, administrative policies review, our committee, uh, any progress?
Yeah, mostly by, by then.
Um, yeah, I can share, and then Kenny, feel free to dump in, sorry, they were reading on me, but I finally got a draft done. And emailed it to Kenny to take a look, and then once we have his feedback, well, I think we'll meet with Kathy and her team. Um, but basically, Kenny and I had looked at quite a few other city policies and municipal codes. And there were a few that we really liked because it categorizes, um, some of like the behaviors or prohibited activities into different levels. So it's easier to see like, this is the level one, kind of, you know. You're messing around with the tables or being too loud versus a level three is like you're threatening staff and it's illegal activity. Um, so it's like categorizing the behaviors so that it's more clear and the consequences are more clear. Um, so we sort of took the best of some of the cities that we liked, which was. And I think it's the ones the city, or the library staff also flagged as the ones they like, so it's like Long Beach, Santa Monica and Burbank. Um, so we moved some of the current rules around under those categories. We added kind of a brief opening statement just about. You know, the library being a place of like community inclusivity, and also, you know, if you're being disruptive to what other people are trying to do and staff. That like, that behavior is not. Um, the part that I think is the trickiest is the municipal code. Um, because I realized in drafting it that a lot of your consequences are in the code. Um, and if you wanna align, and I think the code's kind of crazy with the so many different things, so.
It grammatically, like the.
It's hard to follow.
Or, or, you know.
Yeah, it's, so I think it's easiest if the code could align with the rules of conduct, and if the rules of conduct are saying. You do this and your library privileges could be suspended for a month, if you do something really serious, it could be up to a year. The code, the municipal code needs to reflect that, um, so I don't know what the process is, if it's easy to update the code.
Um, I, it's not necessarily.
Not correct, yeah, I know.
It's not necessarily easy, but I also, it's not. Just, a former city attorney told me that, and I don't know if it's true. Um, that it can be very hard to get these codes adopted because of, um, advocacy for people who are. You know, bringing in all their baggage, so, so there can be challenges that, oh, you're trying to discriminate against this person or that type of person or whatever. But I, I, I don't think that there's a lot of people with their eyes on this, you know? I mean, it'll go to the city council, it'll be out for public, you know, it'll be a public hearing. I don't anticipate it being that hard, I think it's just important that we get it right and. Um, I was at the Southern California Library Popper Meeting today, and the Long Beach Director gave us. An update on what's the latest down there, um, and so, you know, they did their code, their rules. They did it all, did all of it over, starting in like twenty, twenty twenty-two, when they have their big crisis. Um, so, she's, I, they did a lot of really good work, right, and they have a robust city attorney staff, I mean, they should be pretty good. So I wanna look at how they aligned the rules and the code.
I think one thing with both Long Beach and Santa Monica for sure, I didn't look at Burbank's closely. Is their municipal codes are really simple.
Yeah.
Like, it just says. Up to a year, and I feel like sometimes, you know, that leaves a lot of discretion to you and the staff. And some people might have an issue with that because it's like, how can you be consistent then, and not make sure it's not subjective, but like. All of it usually just aligns to the rule of code that says, you know, if you don't do this and you've gotten all the warnings, like we can suspend your privileges for up to a year. Um, and then here's how you appeal the suspension. And it doesn't go into like a lot of details about if you do X, Y, Z, it's three months.
They have all of that, but it's procedural, right, so they have, in fact, I asked her today, I was like, I know she said that to me before, she said, it's actually on the website. So they have, um, so they're using the same incident tracking software that we're implementing.
Yeah.
Um, and they, um. They do have a thing, that's like, if you do this, it's this, if you do it this many times, like it's a whole thing.
Yeah.
And, and it makes it easy for the staff directly to, in fact, she shared a lot of really interesting statistics about. Um, they're actually logging a lot more problems because staff know how to do it. You know, people are, they feel empowered to do it correctly, and they know what the punishment should be, you know. So, um, they just got, they've done a really good job, so I'm, I'm thinking, let's look at, at their supporting documents.
Yeah.
That they're using, because that's what we need also, like, we don't have those.
Yeah, that's what I, I put in my comments, is like, I feel like the, the Long Beach code. Is pretty simple, but I think they must have a process or workflow to guide them, because it'll say like, up to three months, up to a year, but somehow they must know.
They do, yeah, so they have like, it, they basically have, um. Kind of severity.
Yeah.
And, and we talked today about, well, what do you do about something that's not, um, severe, but it's pervasive. You know, cuz she said, yeah, we kind of deal with that as well, I asked, I asked everyone also about, like, are there any people that are just, you know. No, you're gone forever, and, um, you know, if you do something heinous, why should I, why should you get to come back in here? Um, the consensus was sort of, yeah, that's not very often done, it's probably a civil rightsy kind of the thing that we would have to look into. But it is sort of hard to swallow that, you know, the staff members. All, you know, it's right, so I wanna explore that, like, um, what, what are the choices at that point? Is it just a restraining order, can we do longer based on, you know, what happens? So anyway, there's, um, I, I think Long Beach is gonna be a really good resource, but yes, you're gonna need to see those associated documents.
Yeah.
In fact, I should, um, you said, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna try to get her to, um, have a short, like, not short, but like a Zoom meeting with.
Yeah.
Us and with the, the Olivia and Alexis, who are now working on implementing that software, cuz I couldn't get it done. Um, so she can kind of talk us through how they're using it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, how they're, they're, they are using it to like generate the ban letters, which is one of the things we were hoping that we could kind of trick it into doing. So they were able to configure that for them, so, I don't know, it might, it might be interesting to hear her talk about how they.
Also be curious, like, if the software can tell you what the consequence is, right?
I believe so, yeah, like, that, again, you're like, check, 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 check. I mean, again, I don't know, I don't know, like, I'm not sure, there's probably some piece of human.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's the problem, we, every time something happens here, we're like, how long should it be? I don't know, and then we look at the crazy municipal code, and well, it could be this, but it could be that, so. That's, we need that very, pretty, pretty badly, so.
Yeah, that's what I wasn't, yeah, a lot of the difficulty with it is the enforcement of violations. And, um, it's not just any conflict between the municipal code and the policy procedure. It's who enforces, and a lot of the ones we looked at, they had a wide range of, of who at the library enforces it, or and they're all, I forget, there is. Some terminology some of them use about designated agent, it doesn't.
That's, that's what it says in ours now, it's like, it's the library director, they're designated, so we have like letters on file. That, what came up today was, are, are your, um, public, are your unions. You know, pushing back about, this isn't my job, I don't wanna do this, so there's all these little pieces for us, and I think for. I mean, some people do not have the skill set or the knowledge, like you wouldn't expect it of them, but we basically would expect it of any of like our full-time staff. To be able to perform these things, yeah.
I thought we were getting a. Semi-permanent security, I was just gonna, that, yeah, would that person be involved in enforcement?
Well, they're involved in. In monitoring and enforcing in that they're saying to people, you have to stop doing that, you're gonna have to leave, you know.
If, if a.
But they're not gonna fill out the.
If somebody has. Well, I think there's a, uh, there's two issues. Who undertakes the administrative work to establish the list of. This person has this restriction for this period of time, but once that's been entered. Then can't the person on staff at the desk. You know, we have a list of pictures and, hey, Bill, you know, came in. Go and get the security guard and say, Bill is restricted from the building until this date, could you please ask them?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, except that.
So I, cuz I feel very troubled asking the staff to undertake the policing action of it. Um, but the, the staff certainly can and should be the ones undertaking the administrative, you know, establishment.
Right, well, and that's why we got, that's why we got thoughtful of them, right, like to take that, some of that burden of managing this behavior. Off of them, the guard is not here all fifty-eight hours, so we're still, you know, doing the management when they're not here, but. Yeah, it's been a huge help, and it's been a deterrent too, people come in, turn around, and they leave. Um, so, yeah, they also though, don't know the regular characters yet as well, you know, like, well. They're up there, but someone, people that like to sneak in, even though they're banned, they may not see them, they may not know what they look like, so that's part of the software. We're hoping that it'll have this kind of mugshot-y component, like, not a mugshot, but you know, we'll be able to see. Pictures of the people.
It should be a photograph.
Yeah, the, and the photographs aren't right, we have not great cameras, but something, right, so, um, especially since. You know, we don't know people's names, I mean, it can be hard, people can, it happens all the time that the, the full-time staff ban someone. We all know they're banned, but people working on Sunday, they don't know who's the sixth foot tall, this, you know. So the picture should help, but yeah, the guard is, that's what they're here for, is to, to deal with this stuff, and, um. But again, I mean, we're the ultimate authority, we're the one. But again, I mean, we're the ultimate authority, we're the ones with the authority to ban people, so they're. Yeah, they're more on the prevention and um enforcement side. But when it comes to actually issuing out the consequences. That the admin staff.
In in the policy. Because some of the cities have this and some didn't, as far as. Who has the role at the library for enforcement, we're talking about the designees, but do we need to have that in our policy or should it just be something internal at the library? Do library patrons need to know that?
So I don't know what that's about, you know, it was interesting because the municipal code um. It it specifies who you appeal to and. Long Beach today was saying that they're actually having to revise the municipal code because all appeals were going to the city council. And someone said, why is that? She said, I don't know, I'm not the attorney, I didn't write it, you know, everyone looked at it and said, looks great. So they're like, no, that's not right, it should be going to the city manager. And here, the lower level appeals, like for thirty days, go to you guys. And then when it's more, it goes to the city manager, so I don't know.
I think it's the other way, because I was just looking at it, I think it's the city manager and then.
Does the low ones and you guys do the board of trustees? So I don't know where that's coming from, I don't know if that's like standard, best practice, if that's some history here, it's like, we'll wanna look into that and see. What is the? The the right way to do that, but I don't think um, I mean, I think the the ability to appeal. Uh, is has to be in there, but I don't know the specificity about who is authorized to do it. I mean, I think that. The library director or their designee is basically to let us operationally decide who's best. You know, able to do that.
The the flexibility to some.
Then we can just say.
Sick or.
I mean.
That's a designated for.
Right.
You know, weekdays, something for Saturdays, something for Sundays. But is the designee? To tell the person who has their foot on the furniture to take it off, or is it designee to do the suspension?
Do the suspension.
But is this. But if the security guard is not present, that you, as you said, they're not here all fifty-eight hours. Um, then who does it when they're?
I should show you guys the ban letter. The ban letter is like, I. The librarian banned you, you know, and then um, you know.
Are they notified at that time, you know? I guess we should put in there whether or, uh, because we, in there is they have a right to appeal. But should they be, I think they should be notified when they're banned, when that they have a right to appeal and that should be given to them in writing.
We try, I mean, right, these are not people who are, oh, let me read that.
Well, I was thinking you could have a a simple form because it serves a couple of purposes. One, it lets them know. Their right to appeal and two, it limits what they can do, you know, a hundred words or less, you know. What the one document they could submit, something like that.
It, I mean, it's all um, all of the information about appealing and that's all in the in the letter. Which again, the software, the beauty of the software is um, it it's gonna produce that letter for me, I'm gonna go in and say, they did this, they did this, they did this, and it's gonna spit out. Here's what you did and here's how you appeal, so it'll make that much easier, because right now, we're literally. Having to put in text in the letter and print it out, so it'll be a lot more streamlined. Um, but again, getting, giving them, I mean, in my mind, and this is maybe, we've asked the city attorney this before, and I remember the answer, but. Um, something to be effective, so someone does something, they're banned, but they don't take the letter. Does that mean they're not banned? They're banned.
They have that noted.
And so I just, it's it's they're banned as of the date, and so what happens, you know, people will do something and then they won't. Come back, they don't know they're banned, by the time they come back, they're not banned anymore, so we tell them, by the way, you were banned. For the last thirty days, you just didn't happen to be here, so. Be aware, you know, here's your letter, you were banned, you didn't know, but you were. Or they come back and they're still banned and we tell them, oh, by the way, when you did this, 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 and this, here's the letter, you could still be banned to you at that time, so.
Yeah, because they do something and you guys are not able to give them like the letter, they just.
Yeah.
Does the, does the. Code, the municipal code and or our rules of behavior indicate a procedure that we are to follow. Uh, in order to provide them with notice of their banning. I don't think it's in the policy.
It's not in the policy, yeah.
Probably should stay, we will take these steps in order. No, but I mean, as far as notification, we don't tell them in the policy they're notified, we do tell them what are, what are the steps that can be taken, but not that. What will be notified.
Yeah.
I mean, my.
I think you're, I think you're missing my, what I'm asking. Um, because we are a a. Location that's open to the public without being a a member of the library, et cetera. Um, I think that, I'm just guessing, that uh, there are probably prescriptions on. What we can and can't do in terms of banishment, and I would presume that the. Uh, there's typically, you're gonna be required to give written notice. And uh, afford them an appeal. Uh, and there should be. It so that we don't get into an argument over whether someone did or didn't receive notice, just like if you're serving someone. You know, there are steps that you could, baskets, you know, here you've been served. Uh, other is, you know, mailing it to an address that you think they once lived at, um, which is not as good, but so there should probably be a a an order of. You know, these are the the ways that you're noticed, and if if any of these have been accomplished and somebody signs off that they did it. You're deemed noticed, uh, so that we can point to it if somebody says, I didn't get notice, you've taken away my rights, I'm suing the city, I'm suing the library, I'm suing the trustees and. You know, whatever.
We can ask the city attorney, but I feel like it maybe is as simple as um. You know. Every effort was made to provide you with this, you know, we on on the letter, we have some checkboxes, it's like hand-delivered. Unable to deliver.
Yes.
Wouldn't accept it, you know, you check that.
I feel, I feel more comfortable uh, if we had an actual order of attempts and if. If we've done this, then we have been deemed to have used all reasonable efforts in order to do so.
Well, I'd I'd like to, I mean, I'm. I'm not saying no at all, but I'm saying like, I'd like to check with the city attorney, because this is adding a layer of administrative work. Like already. So if we don't.
If nobody else is seeing this, then we don't need to.
Yeah, I haven't seen it in the other codes, yeah, I think the one that, the biggest thing I noticed is almost like our current behavior policy does not. Have this appeal process in there and every other one does.
It has it in the policy, not the code, or both.
So it's in the policy, like this is how you appeal your suspension.
It's in the code too?
It's in uh, it's in the code, it's in the policy, but it's that it's. Given to the patron, so it's like out here, I forget where it was, but it'll say like, this is how you. Appeal your suspension, so I moved it to the draft, so it's clear in the policy, like this is your.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, they didn't, when that was drafted, we didn't have. A code and a banning, right?
But I think to Dean's point, we can go back and look, I didn't see anything about like a notice process in any of the ones we looked at, but we can double check. Um.
I think the notice is like. Really, like if you're talking, you can never step foot in this building again, it's like almost like there may be little distinctions too versus like. The person that got banned once and came back in after their ban, didn't know that they were banned technically. Never repeat offender because they learned their lesson is different than the person that did that same arc, but then. Repeat offenders and is and then repeats offenders again, and then on that third one, when you're like, hey, you're gone for a year, it says. Well, I was never told that I was officially banned. It's like that's kind of, but you know, and so I think recording that, it's like that moment. It's maybe the, you know, just like you're saying, the check in the box.
Yeah, issued or not issued, tried to issue.
I think there's written decisions written on appeals, right?
Say that again?
There's a written decision on the appeal, right?
Yeah, no one ever, these are not people who typically.
I was wondering, because we've never had one brought before us, and I was thinking like, um, where my office is downtown, I'm on the board of of that building. And it's largely a residential building, but you know, some offices there, but um. There is a process for the HOA, typical HOA process where there's uh, people are gonna be fined, then there's there's an appeal of the board, we customarily. Will deal with them here and there.
Yeah, and um, some of the bigger libraries, I think Glenda was talking today about. Appeal, oh no, maybe it was Long Beach, you know, the person literally comes in and they sit down and they go through the process then. And they get either readmitted or they don't, so I, we've n- never done that since I've been here, but again. Yeah, I mean, we've only had the. The, it was adopted in like January twenty seventeen, so. And when I came in the summer, so yeah, so in the seven and a half years that I've been here, no one's ever appealed, most, most people are. They did something wrong and they probably know it, or they are not in a position to. Get into discussion or argument or defend themselves, so most people are like, okay, and they go. Certainly someone could appeal, and again, typically would have. You know, uh, if they're going to all that trouble, they might have a good argument that that it wasn't fair, that something wasn't done properly or whatever. But most people are not. They did what, they did the thing, you know?
The, I can go back and look, the one other thing I'll just add to your point, Kathy, is I'm pretty sure almost. Most of the ones we looked at, the first. Appeal for the shorter suspensions is to the library director, and then the second one, the longer uh, suspension appeals are to the city manager. But here we are. We're like city manager and then the board.
I know.
And I don't think the board is named anywhere.
I know, and I asked, again, like Long Beach, uh, it's only the city manager, regardless of length. Though I don't know where it's coming from, but that. This, that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Who who's making those decisions, whether it was a board that said, we should be the ones to make that decision or.
Not to, not to belabor it, I'm just curious, does it say? City manager or designee, or is it gotta be the city manager?
City manager.
I mean, maybe since there's so few. Everything should be referred to city manager. And then some of you guys want to deal with it, you know?
Yeah.
Because I guess, yeah, the city manager would maybe then decide, oh, this is something that legal needs to deal with versus. Something that we can do in a pro, like, you know, maybe it can't be you because there is a. Like legal.
Right, nobody would, you know. At you for, you know.
Yeah, it could be you, because you're probably the one that issued it, so it's kind of weird. Yeah, I mean, I think the key, right, whoever's. Receiving the appeal, the bottom line is, did the staff document it correctly? Make every effort to, you know, notify um. You know, that's our job to to have all those ducks in a row, so that when the appeal comes to pass and and to. To be consistent in the way, I mean, that's where all the problems come from is.
Yeah.
He didn't make me leave, but you made me leave, or I saw you made me leave, but you didn't make him leave, you know, so we had a speaker this morning, he was. Talking a lot about, you know, about that piece that um, everyone has to really underst, and this is the problem with our code, right? If you can't even understand it, well, no, we're probably not. All of us enforcing it in the same way, because it's believing it's hard to even use, so these improvements. Should um, make us much more consistent and our documentation better and everything else, so. That's what I'm.
Typically, the rules expand on the code, not the other way around, so.
Yeah, I mean, this code, this code says, if you break anything in that rules, I mean, it's really weird, right? That so that it says, if you break the anything in there, you're guilty of this, but then it also then repeats. Things that are in there.
Yes.
And then you're guilty of thi, it's like double, I mean, it just is.
Like the municipal code actually lists like these specific behaviors, it's like a hundred and eighty days or this and that, and it's like, I've. The other codes do not get into that level of material.
So, yeah, it's strange, you you should either, it seems like.
Generally shouldn't unless there was a, I mean, by in my own practice. If there's a lawsuit, the what what ends up happening from the lawsuit uh, ends up with. We write a new rule, okay? We don't want this to happen again, so if this, then that, so that's typically where the code comes from and it will say. If. If you uh, break the rules and then somebody writes the rules and then they're approved maybe by city council to be. You know, adopted as the rules of municipal library.
You guys have that, that's the, that's the thing, right? That's why all that stuff should be in the rules, because that's your purview and your authority, so. Get the municipal code, leave it, and then, you know, the rules can be changed by you guys whenever you need to, with much less scrutiny. Then we would be, you know.
Unless there was a lawsuit that they fixed it by putting it in the code, so I doubt anyone has that.
I think the code, this code is particularly poor, in my, in my opinion, it's just very um. It literally is every time, I mean, I've tried to make like a. An escalate, you know, like, okay, if you did this, this, and but then, well, what, do you have to do that and that?
Yeah.
There's a place where you can't tell if the.
Yeah.
It's just really hard and it shouldn't be that hard, it should be, anyway, so.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it's also like. The uh, not every, but like many of the other city codes, or sorry, the rules of conduct or behaviors. Like it lists the consequence in there.
In there.
And ours is not listed, it's listed in the municipal codes, so like you, as the library patron, wouldn't know, like, if I do this three times, I'm gonna get suspended right here.
Go see two point seven eight.
Yeah, you know, whereas other, other libraries, like conduct codes are more clear of like, if you do this, you're gonna get suspended.
It's in the version, yeah, absolutely, that that'll be great. So then after we um, adopt. The new. Policy.
I don't know if we can adopt a new policy without updating the code.
That's what I was gonna say, then do we take it to? The city manager for to give out the, the terms for the code, or do we have to do it before we adopt the? I think that, I mean, based on um. What I'm hearing, it sounds like we probably. Um. I mean, obviously, we're gonna wanna have a conversation with the city attorney before we adopt. The new rules. And say, okay, this is how this, we think this needs to work together, what have you want us to do this, so I think it's, it, I think we probably just have to. Have that conversation once we're really clear on. How we think those two things should relate to one another, because obviously the former city attorney had a totally different idea about. How those things should relate to one another, so I think we wanna go to our current city attorney with. And done our research, and this is how it's best done, and since we jump in that way, and this is how we wanna do it. Can we do that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
Is that our goal by the end of the year? I forget what our annual. I, well, I mean, I know we've been trying, you know, keep it moving, like, so we try at least set ourselves like, okay, we're gonna try to do whatever, so we said. Um, it sounds like maybe we'll meet the staff between now and the next.
Yeah.
Meet up this meeting, so maybe that's our, our goal, and then um. Maybe after. This is March, right, so we'll have, we'll talk about it here in April, and then maybe then if we're ready to talk to the city attorney.
Are we gonna speed the proposed changes before we go to the city attorney?
Yeah, 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 I was just thinking like the long term, like what are we trying to aim for?
I think it makes, what Kathy said makes perfect sense, we, this is what we think we should do, then we go to the city. To tell, so the city can change it, then he can adopt it.
Yeah, and they prefer, I mean, the city attorney prefers that, right? If you've done. Some analysis and have some feedback that makes their job easier, so if we can come and say, here's what we think, you know. Um, and based on what we've seen, that will make it a lot easier, and and hopefully they'll also. You know, they may have strong opinions, they may have seen things in other places that we don't know about, so it's a conversation, but I think.
Do we invite them to this meeting or?
No, we probably.
You and then.
Yeah, we would probably um. Yeah, if you go, I don't know, probably I would reach out to them initially and say, this is what we've been doing, this is where we're at, we're ready to talk to you about this. Let's, let's have that conversation, and then if we feel like we need. You guys there too, to talk about the work that went into it and why we're recommending what we recommend, for sure, we can include. But I don't think we're happening this group, whole group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good to map out for like the next couple of meetings, because I think we usually take August off typically, so just. You know, we only meet so many times in the year, so just being mindful of what we're trying to do, and you've been waiting for this for so long, so I just wanna.
Yeah.
What's up with time?
So between now and the April meeting, hopefully we can sit down with the staff and take a look at it. And then in April, maybe there's like a, like a draft for.
As we can preview.
To look at, and then um. If that goes well and people, you know, have changes, we make them, then we'd be ready to go to the city tree. Um. Yeah, and maybe, I mean, depending on how quickly you get the city attorney to look at it.
Yeah.
You know, we might be ready to talk about it again in May, with some, like, here's what the city attorney said. Let's do it or whatever, so yeah, I mean, I think we're on track for like summer.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions?
Very exciting, thank you, you guys, because I know it's, I I know how much work it is, because I was never able to get it done. No, it's, it's, I'm really grateful.
Thank you, guys, I feel like it's been on the um, forged uh, goals for a long time, so this is.
And so is the municipal code, right? I mean, we spend a lot of time on parts of municipal code that aren't this piece of it, also that kind of fizzled when we had a change in the city manager, so. It'll, it's gonna be interesting to to get a new city manager, they're gonna wanna get. The lay of the land, they're not gonna be like, sure, I'll change your code tomorrow, you know, they're gonna. The lay of the land, they're not gonna be like, sure, I'll change your code tomorrow, you know, they're gonna. Need to be comfortable um, so, yeah.
Where did the new city manager come from again?
They this, they're currently um in Palm Desert.
You may wanna double check what the Palm Desert code says.
So the, under this city manager, they, and I don't know. It was at his instigation, but they actually um Palm Desert had county, Riverside County Library serving them. Um and they actually pulled out of the county, which is a pretty big decision, that's like, you know. Some branch. Laconyada just saying, we're not gonna be part of the county anymore, we want our own library, that's what they did, so they're. A little rocky, but they're basically pulled out of the county, funding their own municipal library themselves.
All the more reason to look at what that code says, because then that. Feel good about.
I don't know if they're that far along. My guess is that it's it's a, you know what I mean, they like they're literally starting. No, a year and a half ago, they hired um the the director from Glendale was hired to go down there and kind of. Do all that, so so they're working on it, but. Yeah, they may not have the most like current, but it but it is, it it does speak maybe a little bit, and and I'm gonna call that director and ask, but. To this person's understanding of libraries or the value of libraries, I mean, at least they must know something about libraries, because I can't imagine why you would say. Let's pull out of our county system and go to the huge amount of trouble to. Create a whole new library operation from scratch. Kind of a joke, so must have some knowledge of public libraries. So we'll see. With the politics, yeah, it should be really interesting, I mean, it's much better than having someone who. Had a county branch and that's all they'd ever had, you know, West Hollywood. Our, we had two city managers ago, came from West Hollywood, there is no city. Library in West Hollywood, the county runs it, so that's a person then who doesn't have a really. Strong understanding, familiarity with what that, I mean, so I think it's a good thing. Um and he's worked other places, he, you know, big city, big, much bigger cities, which I think is great, because. More experience, has seen a lot of other things that. His city, the city in Texas that he came from has a very robust. City library system going, so he should know something about libraries.
No other things on the policies, then um community center, library center, site planning progress report from our representative. Any updates for us?
I want to acknowledge uh Saint Kathy.
We made a huge hurdle last week, we got a big hurdle.
The patience of a saint uh our staff director has.
All all of the staff. If it's, you know, it's fifteen people.
Yeah, it it is. You know, it's funny, because the the comment kept coming up, we can't do this by committee, well, no, that's exactly what we're here to do, is to do this by committee. It's just when you have fifteen people, fifteen uh very knowledgeable, very experienced, very opinionated. People, I'm probably one of the lesser opinionated people in uh there um. But we are making great strides, and I think people are raising excellent points, uh one. I'll I'll talk about this in my own personal comment, but. Uh someone pointed out, you know, what's left off this list, we have a list of of things, the next step that's coming. Uh is that we're going to be uh setting up a schedule of. Uh going out to uh meetings around town, letting them know that there's going to be this survey, that there's going to be these, the uh uh. Spray, a frame of, you know, uh. Visible things with little, you know, charrette style tabs that you can go to put your votes on, and what those are gonna be. And what those things are, you know, what do you want in a library and in a community center and a senior center? We we addressed where should the various uh items be, what what is? Library focus, what is senior focus, what is focus to everything, like performance space, the performance space is gonna be used by the library, by the senior center, by the community center. So should that be in the community center, so there was a lot of discussion of that, and again, you have fifteen people all trying to have this discussion at the same time. You were there for part of it um. But we we've made some great headway, and one thing that somebody noticed was, there's no maker center. Or maker place. Maker space, and and I was like, oh, yeah, and then I went to this thing at the public library last Saturday, and so. I spent most of my time in that maker space and my my brain was exploding. That after dark thing that they did. Was phenomenal. Um I I kept, I I was telling them, I'm walking around, they're going, I'm looking at this a little different than I think most of the people in here, because I'm like. Ooh, could we do that? Could we do that? How much would it cost to do that? But so we made, we've made great strides, uh we looked at, and with no disrespect, the the staff had put together a flyer. And we looked at it, but it wasn't uh dynamic enough, it works great for, hey, we're having reading session this time, but. We want something that's gonna be more eye catching to grab people's attention, uh and staff went back and worked with other people and. And came back with something that was, we had a lot of choices, a lot of options, and we worked through. Through it, got a little funny at times, but um, so uh great headway made, and yes, I think we did turn a corner. And now we're ready for, I I hope that you have all the dates that you can uh read out. Uh we're gonna be launching, and I think we're gonna ask that uh this body as well. Uh be ambassadors a little bit, uh because we are the library board of trustees, so anyone who knows that is gonna ask us, hey, what's going on with this? And what's going on with it is just that, where Kathy's gonna give us the the list of dates uh and places. Where uh these are gonna take place, there's also going to be uh a tent, is that what we?
Yeah, do you want me to start like from from the top?
Maybe if you could run us down, because I think that will help, but essentially, we're gonna have three kinds of of interaction, there's the interaction. Just because you're in the library, so the boards are always in the library, or at times they'll always be in the senior center, so everybody coming in will see that. And be able to go, hey, the staff, what what what's this, and they'll tell them. Uh there's gonna be communication, communication, uh Kathy can maybe give us the list of of all the things, but uh very robust action to. Read, like we were talking about the notice, we're gonna be doing four or five different types of outreach to let people know that this survey is taking place. Um that they can take that survey by coming in and putting up their dots or go online and take the survey. Uh so that we can get a lot of feedback from as many groups, as many stakeholders as possibly we can. Uh they're also going to take that, uh so we have the the stationary in the library or senior center, we have the online survey, we have. Uh outside activities that extrav- egg extravaganza, things like that, where we'll take these boards out to. Uh and we're going to also go out and tell people. Not take it to them, but go and tell various groups that have established meetings. That these things are going on and tell the counter, and then there will be. Uh and then Kathy will give that to us in in queue, but uh an actual open house and presentation. From group four. Plus, we'll have the benefit of a a separate presentation for group four ourselves, but one that will be um. Uh done in a daytime slot and an evening slot, we've spent a lot of time discussing when and. How many times and what time of day. Well, I think there is a lot of validity to what to call it, because we wanna have people get a sense that. We're we're starting with something, and we could just put lip, keep putting lipstick on the pig. Or we can uh go out and get a new cow. And um so I I I think that taking people from, we discussed, should it be imagining or reimagining, you know?
Well, that's all true, but like, should it be called a open house or a? You know, I mean.
What what is the messaging, because what do people think, when you hear open house, does that sound like? I'm gonna come in and and be self guided walk around, or am I gonna come and there's gonna be a presentation that I'll be able to get. Direct feedback from the actual people that are doing the work. So I think we ended up going full circle back to open house, as I recall.
I mean, yeah, we definitely wanted to, I mean, we, you know, it is important to think about the language, you know, typically. They use community meetings, well, no, we wanna, it's a workshop, like it has this interactive component, it's not just like everyone's sitting in a, so. You know, and I was like, workshop conveys that, well, no, I should say, you know, interactive work.
I like, I like workshop.
Yeah, I'm like workshop's fine, you know, like.
We did, we did discuss, but it it did feel a little bit, if anyone's ever been to a Passover Seder, you know, arguing of, does. We say that that all the days, does that include the nights, you know, it did feel a little bit like that, does is interactive workshop redundant? Because workshops are interactive by definition.
And I mean, right, like that's, we had to go through all that to get to the end and. Yeah, it it so so um. The where we are right now is, so we had our meeting last Thursday, so since last Thursday, we've been um. You know, we're we revising the publicity and marketing material that we had shared with these guys and got all this feedback, so those um. Things are, basically, we we're launching on Monday, right, that's when the word is going out, the. Press releases going out, the website's launching, the survey launches, so between last Thursday and next Monday is not. Enough time necessarily to get all of our little ducks in a row, you know, just getting things back from the printer, so our our, you know, for us. We need the survey working, we need the website fully populated and working, and we need at least the flyer. Um we're still working on a bookmark, so we're trying to do some translation. So some things will be coming a little later, and then the boards that that Dean was talking about, it's like um. I'm gonna say forty inch by, they're big boards, um and there are eight of them. So, and we've proved them all, like Dean said, these guys participated. Um initially in the looking field, but that went a little haywire, so. The last time they presented to this, to the ad hoc committee, they really had them focused on. Not the pictures, not what it looks like, but these are the categories, what you think, and seeing them all on one page, right, versus. You can see the one board and and then you see the next board, but it, so they gave him like a table. That had all the things, which I think helped us say, oh, I see that's there, but not there, or I see it's rare. Um so now they're back, now that they thought that, they're back to the boards themselves, so there are these good boards, and again, like you said, those are um. It it's like meant to be a, an educational tool, um an engagement tool, but it is also one kind of. Information stream, it's um the the content is the same as the online survey. Um so the same things that the people will be voting on on the board are the same things that are in the online survey. Um one of the benefits of the board is that you. Replace the board, so when we go to extravaganza, it'll be all new boards for that event, so then you find out um. You know, out of town people, like, you might learn something, right, from eclectic versus farmer's market versus extravaganza. Um so those are, those are gonna be then active, um they're gonna mail those down, I guess we need them the first time we need them, need them is April third. So I'm assuming we'll get them before that, but um in fact, yeah, we're gonna be looking at them. Our, we had a project management team meeting this week with them, and then we'll have one on the twenty sixth. So they'll probably come right after that, so we'll, or maybe they'll come before that, I don't know, anyway, um. Because they've been waiting for us to finalize this graphic marketing branding, so they can insert it into all of these things, the survey, the board. Um so those will be around, we'll take those with us when we go places, they'll, you know, we can take it to the council. Courtyard on, you know, council meeting night, they're kind of big and troublesome to move around, but.
We have an open house on March twenty sixth.
If they let us, they are not big fans, I mean, I don't know, that's that's why I think, you know, individual schools. You guys might be able to talk somebody into that, but I would get in trouble if I tried to do that.
But will it be ready by the twenty sixth, or they're not?
So I don't have my calendar of like who's doing what yet.
Describe that, if you're having a meeting on the twenty sixth, probably not gonna be ready until the twenty eighth.
Well, the meeting on the twenty sixth is more about the. The uh agenda and the content of the public meetings, so the boards might be ready, they really are waiting on the boards for the brand, the branding, which.
Yeah.
I think, I hope they gave it to me today.
Also on the twenty sixth, and I just wonder like. It's the elementary schools are having their open house, so all the parents are on campus with the kids, and we could just put it in the courtyard.
Distracting though from from.
Yeah.
Because there's so much going on and you don't wanna.
And we just have to be careful, if the superintendent feels like we're trying to. Sneak around and. Put things in his schools that are not approved.
What we were focused on was sending a representative from the the ad hoc committee to the PTA meetings.
And that's all.
What could be good is, and I forget, because it's been quite a while since we did open house, but there's a a general like. Uh assembly before you then go to the classrooms, or is it only go to the classrooms? Because you have a general assembly, having someone from the ad hoc committee come and just speak for two or three minutes about, hey. Just so you know, we're doing this, we're we're, we're having this uh conversation about a potential site redevelopment for. Library, the library park, that would include library, senior center, community center, and we have a survey, and it's now live. And here's how you can find it, and we have a little thing with a QR code, people can come up with a QR code, two or three minute just bam. Because that's what what we're looking to do, is to go around to as many community, community groups as possible, and. You know, some PTA's are more robust than others, sometimes there's ten people, sometimes there's fifty people, depending on what's on agenda, but if you go to something like open house. There's a couple hundred people.
Yeah.
I don't know if you'd be mad for putting that inside there.
No, 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 I'm talking about somebody just coming in, literally saying what I just said.
I mean, I would feel great about that, I don't know. So, yeah, so I, we have a calendar, right, and I have to be honest, that the PTA stuff is so confusing. I had Grace um Kong, I was like, okay. Yeah, like who, who's who, the generals, the councils, these ones, that, like, it's impossible. Um so I have this list, and I, you guys might.
I don't know about Marengo, but I would say like, I don't think a lot of people actually from our school participate in the general PTA. But what you can ask, and you do have to go through the district, is to put it in the weekly emails, so we did that for.
We're already looking at that, uh city staff is looking at doing that with with the school district, but. Again, if there's an opportunity to have a human be in front of people, ten people is better than zero. But a couple of hundred to come in and say, not sure if you're aware of this yet. It's this campaign is just launched, but there is an online survey, you will be getting emails about it, you'll be seeing ads in the paper, there'll be flyers, we'll be at. Uh all kinds of other local events with this, these big boards, if you're interested. Come and talk to me.
And and I don't, I think you, there's nothing wrong with you guys taking a stack bookmarks and giving to your friends, that's different than me showing up there with my big.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna take the boards to something like that, that would be distracting and and potentially disruptive.
But you know, like as an individual person, you're, you know, you're, you know, I'm, I'll let you know about this, but yeah, I I think I I. I know, you know Jasmine Long?
Yeah, so Jasmine's at our school.
Yes, so Jasmine's gonna do that one, but then I was like, well, maybe, like, there's just a lot of um. It's hard, you you know, you're going to each different school, PTA website, and then you go to the district thing with the council, and. I still am not.
Are you owning the communications plan? Are you the owner of like? Yeah, so we can work on it offline. For like whoever has to do it to do that announcement at the house, because we do have, I think different schools have different times. There's lots of stuff happening in the spring.
And there may be things that are not, that I'm not even seeing. Yeah, a lot of.
Yeah, you guys can run around with bookmarks to track me, yeah.
The goal of the committee is to get to as many organizational meetings as possible to just say. Hey, we're doing this because what, and I I'm gonna keep saying this, but I've seen it happen so many times. You know, will be three months from now, we've sent out thousands of emails, thousands of bookmarks, had. Hopefully a thousand responses to the survey. We've been to twenty community events, uh to present like the three minute presentation, half a dozen community events with these boards, and people go. What are you talking about? I never heard about this, who, 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 who's doing this, you know, so the more we can get in front of people. Uh and and the more we get in front of the same people, so that they go, oh, yeah, that thing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so yeah, you guys can look at PTA stuff with me about.
But can you run down the dates that?
Yeah, so um I don't have that whole outreach date, but uh list of dates, but um. Twenty hose, do it spam, um different people are doing PTA, Dean is doing his.
I'm I meant more the. The where we're gonna take the boards.
Yes, yeah, okay, so um, I know this by heart, but there's a farmer's market at the beginning of April. I think it's the beginning, um I think extravaganza is Saturday the twelfth, if that's a Saturday, um the eclectic is. Yeah, something like that, um so. Yeah, something like that. Um, so we basically are taking the big boards to these four things. Two farmer's markets, ex- um Extravaganza, which is like a thousand people. And the eclectic, which is obviously thousands of people. Um, we're also gonna be, a- and I'm gonna invite, you know, if ad hoc committee members wanna meet us in these places, like if you guys wanna come and help us staff it at Extravaganza. Welcome to do that. We're gonna go to the sustainability fair um on the twenty something. So there's lots of city events, but they're not all getting the board. The boards are going to those four things. Um, the other things are just, we'll be there explaining, talking to people, getting bookmarks, that kind of thing. Um, so the.
Are you gonna try and make poster size?
Yeah, we're doing posters and apron signs.
Yeah, that way people can be like, oh, what's that? Come up, talk to me, you know, Kathy.
I know, I was like, we should do T-shirt.
I haven't been to um, you know, those fairs in in Garfield Park, but you always do an amazing job of having some activity for kids. So if there's any of those kinds of things where you can have the posters and then we can be milling around.
Yeah, and and just um, you guys may not know, so there's basically kind of two rounds of engagement. But this is the first round, and it's kind of starting next Monday when we launch the survey. Survey will stay open for um like six weeks, so all the way through, is that right, or more than that, through through the end of May?
Yeah.
So more than that. Um, so really.
Monday until the end of.
Yeah, yeah, really long time, um, which is giving us a lot of time to, you know, make sure people pick the survey, interact. Um.
Make sure they know about it.
Yeah, make sure they know about. I mean, it's a lot of, it's just education, right, to help people understand what's what's going on, even if they don't get very involved. Personally, the in-person um activity, they're gonna be on site April ninth and tenth. And um, the ad hoc committee, we're arranging to do some off-site tours of different facilities. Um, and they're also, the the consultant is also preparing sort of self. Um, like a packet, so like if you can't go on the bus, there's gonna be a packet that you could take and go yourself. They're also gonna prepare some um virtual tours for sites that they think are good. You know, comparable or of interest to us. So like, those are things that you 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 guys can do too. Like, we can share this list of things we're looking at, and you guys are welcome to to look into those things. So there's gonna be um site tours uh in in the daytime on the ninth. And then um in the community room from four to six is an open house, meaning the boards will be in there. The consultants will be there, staff will be there, you guys might be there. Um, it's really a chance for people, and and the way it was envisioned is also that, like, we can send an invite to the SPPC board and say, you know. We really value your opinion, you know, we have so many clubs in this town, there's no way we can have a special meeting just for you. But if you wanna come and meet and talk directly with our architects, this is your chance, right? So it's kind of.
They should call them consultants or architects.
Yeah, might scare people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
But again, again, just to be clear, I don't know, this is my first time reporting on this to this body. Um, this is a a really a four-stage process, and we're at stage one. Stage one is what could not it look like? But what could it include and what would an overall footprint possibly feel like? The next step is, what would it look like? The third step is funding it. The fourth step is actually building it.
Hmm.
So we're, is that a good summary?
Well, yeah, it is, and some of those are maybe concurrent.
Yeah.
Like, if your design phase, if that's gonna be three million dollars, you may not wanna do that until you know. If you're looking like you're gonna get funding, right? So, because people.
But ironically, it's hard to get funding.
If you don't have a design. Yeah, exactly. So, but I think there's some kind of concurrent stuff that happens there. Um.
What day is the open house?
Open house, there's two, there's uh, so uh, April ninth, which is a.
I thought that was the daytime one.
The tenth of the daytime.
Oh, get it backwards.
Okay, we can say. Sorry, the day of our.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
No, Wednesday, Thursday, sorry.
The day of.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday.
The four ten that morning.
So that so April ninth, uh, it's from four to six. And then the public meeting, the 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 workshop is six thirty to eight. And I would encourage everyone to come to that. Um, we're, like I said, we've seen sort of a preview of what that's gonna be like, but. They're gonna, we're gonna get the full rundown um a week from now, or we can have from now. But it'll basically be um a little different from the presentations that we've seen so far. You know, some context, but also i- it's gonna be a good. It's not all about them telling you stuff, but they do wanna give you some context and help you under, help people understand what what is this all about and what are these phases? And then it goes into um breaking out into little work groups, you know? Um, and the consultant's able to go around and work with the different breakout sessions. And if there's not that many people there, maybe you don't break out, but it's basically there's a big interactive chunk. And then everybody comes back together and talks about.
That's on the same day, April ninth?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Then again, on April tenth, effectively doing the same thing.
Doing the same thing.
In the late morning, early afternoon, so that we can capture, again, our goal here is to capture as many people as possible. Making it easy for people to be there, um, so that they can piss them on that they didn't have the opportunity.
Yeah, so.
And so we get their feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
More important, the feedback, but we do we do have to be cognizant of making it available so that people can't uh say, well, I want to, but I can't.
I mean, it's, you know, it's hard. The city has communities all the time, and. There there are criticisms of how well those opportunities are publicized to the community. But this is the publicized.
At our board meeting.
Not very often, but you know, even, I mean, right, like, the library typically does a pretty good job, maybe relative to other departments that don't do programming. Like, we understand you have to publicize things. Um, other departments, maybe that's not in their kind of, on their wheelhouse. Um, so this is, this is the most publicized activity the city has ever undertaken, as far as I can tell, right? I mean, even compared to, you know, using utilities, I mean, it's, the word is out there. In fact, the Pasadena library director today was, gave a little talk about, you know, they have three hundred million bond dollar bond issue in November. And they only translated into Spanish, and I'm like, for three hundred million dollars, they only need to, but no, we've gotta translate into. I mean, I'm all for inclusivity, right, but if we're going all out, going all out.
We're doing everything we can to reach as many people, because again, the goal here is to create a community center.
Mm hmm.
So if we don't have every aspect of our community represented in the ideation process of it, we won't, we won't be successful.
Mm hmm. How many elementary parents are there on the fifteen member board, elementary school parents?
Um.
There's a few.
Jan, Jasmine, Julia, uh, Tony, Jean, there's quite a few.
About a third.
I mean, Tony's gonna talk to Steph, so he's in the loop. Um, yeah, there's, there's a number of candidates.
He's in middle school now, he's not in elementary.
Oh, he's got, oh, yeah, he actually, um, his son is gonna write an article for the Tiger News. So he came and interviewed me, it was mostly me just like. Yeah, very cute. So he was very cute.
I think it's a, it's a pretty well uh uh cross-section.
It's a really, I mean, we were very thoughtful when we interviewed, I mean, we interviewed the ad hoc, the eight ad hoc people, we interviewed, there were like fifty applicants and. At large, thank you. Um, yeah, it's a great, really great, interesting group of people who have really spot-on skill sets.
Fantastic skill.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Tony does this for a living.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, there's a marketing person, there's a, you know, public works director from another city. There's engineers and architects and parents and smart people. So, yeah, a lot of good, a lot of good help, and excited, and you, and they're excited, right? I mean, right, people are excited to get out there, that's, that's right, yeah, they're psyched, they're they're all excited. So then April tenth, the morning, open house is gonna be nine to ten. Again, thinking it's not gonna be as many people, but the seniors, we're hoping will come over. We also have storytime at ten thirty, so I'm gonna probably try to tell, you know, tell librarians to just say, hey, parents, stop. Come and see us first, maybe we'll put some toys or snacks or, you know, maybe we'll try to lure them in that morning. In fact, I should.
Oh, she's a great, yeah, tell all those kids that some friends or something.
Yeah, just let the kids roll around on the floor.
Like, yeah, you know.
Little.
Oh, they're, because it's storytime, because they're not spilling.
No, they're little babies toddling around, but yeah, like, they can just bring the kid in and let them roll around, and they can look at the board and talk to people. So we'll try to get the seniors and the babies that morning, and then the workshop is the same as the night before. It's ten to eleven, thir- um, yeah, ten to eleven thirty that morning. And then we're doing another round of site visit. So that's what their visit onsite looks like in in April. And then, as I said, the survey and all this data collection goes through the end of May, then they need their time to um, you know. Put it all in the pot and stir it and bring it back out. They come back with that and do a whole nother round, a new survey based on, here's what you told us. Here it is what you told us, is that right? Did we hear you, Ray? Is this what do you think? So, so there's like these two rounds, and that'll be kind of over the summer. So we'll be able to go to concerts in the park with our bookmark and go, you know, kind of hit people where they are. Um, we also talked about doing a muni billing insert. And at this point, we we're getting the word out on round one. I think if we do that, we'll do it in the second round, because that's really, in a way, the fun. Like, not everybody knows or cares, you know, but when you come back and say, look, here's, here's, you're gonna have. We need this many rooms and this many maker spaces and this and this, you know, that's fun for people to weigh in on, you know? So I think that that will be a fun round, and even if you didn't participate in the first round, I think you could get engaged now. So we'll, that'll be a whole nother round of.
I may have overlooked this. Um, are we capturing data so that we can go back out to the respondents?
Y- yes, they do the online survey, they um, they can put in their email, they don't have to.
Right.
They don't have to.
That's what I thought it was on.
Yeah, they're gonna put in their email, and we have, we and we have a a you know, a page where you can go sign up for the emails. Um, yeah, so we'll be able to keep reaching out. Basically, if they, if they put their email in the survey, we will import that into our database. Um, so that's April.
We are asking for a little bit of demographic data on the online survey.
Mm hmm.
Um, yeah, we're not asking for it from the, if you're just walking by and you, you know, check mark on something. If you do take the the online survey, we are asking for uh. What do we end up?
We asked for.
General age group.
Yes, so age group and and, you know, oftentimes surveys are like fifty-five and older, and that's it. So, of course, it's the senior center, so we want fifty-five to sixty-four, you know, like, yeah, so we break them down. Um, I think you were the one who said, do you have children in your household? Um, we, I I wanted, I was like, let's just do it. I wanna know what part of town you live in.
Hmm.
Everyone's like, we don't know, we're just.
How do you get, how do you get to the library, and do you always get to the library that way?
Hmm, how often, um, you know, you know, kind of ethnic, racial? How do you, you know, how do you, pick as many as apply that you identify with? Um, I think that I said, can I have zip codes so that I can?
No, we wanna know, are are you a South Pasadena resident?
Yeah, or did we take that out because we said, we kind of know that from our, I I don't know, anyways, trying to keep it.
It was the IP address.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all have the same, but right, we wanna know who's outside. Anyway, we we don't want it to be long and painful, so all the fun part of the survey is in the beginning. Like, usually you go to the survey, it's like, I'm just, the the fun part and the visual part is the front. And so when you're done with that, it says, oh, can you also help us, because this might help us raise money or whatever, can you do these? But they don't have, it it, they can skip.
And it literally can't help us raise money, because this is why we decided to add some of these aspects to it for grant writing.
Um, one of our meeting members said, yeah. Um, so what else, Dean, is that?
I think I think we've pretty much covered uh about six hours of. And and again, I want to go on record as commending our um, our library director, because.
It's everybody though, right? Like, I mean, Lucy and it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot of work.
They're over here, and they're chiming in, and everyone is literally looking at you.
Well, that's true.
You're down at the bottom of the table, right below the screen, and everyone's looking at you, and you're running the meeting effectively. So it it does sometimes feel, uh, I I I felt sometimes that um it was all weighted on your shoulders. And I want to mend you for your patience with it and uh just. In a larger community, we would have hired a person just to do what you're doing on top of your job.
Well, you know what the difference is? I got an email from one of the um cultural heritage commissioners after the exciting meeting on the twenty sixth, I think. And he was like, I don't, what's happening? I can't find, I don't know. And I, and as I wrote my reply to him, I was like, you know, you wouldn't normally know. This would all be done privately, like, this is, this is not typically public, the part of the public process. We're doing all order to laundry in a public meeting.
We're intentional.
Well, but I mean, all of this, like, you know, what is the messaging? You don't really don't have that conversation in public, you come up with the message and then share it. So, you know, it's just a different, it's different, it doesn't, I mean, I'm sure.
It's South Pasadena. We have so many people, and again, I I I mean this seriously, we have so many people that are so involved. But they're involved in so many things, and they can't be involved in everything. And something's gonna always slip under the map, and no matter how much we're out there publicizing this, they're gonna go, what do you mean? When when did this start up? I never heard about this, which I think is gonna be pretty hard for them to honestly say. But there's going to be people, so by 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 doing this, airing the dirty laundry, as you say, in public. We're making it very open, transparent uh process such that people can know more. At this stage, what's going on.
Know how we felt there. Anyway, he was um, of course, you know, I wrote a lot, you know, and he said, oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to make you write such a long, you know. But thank you so much, he called me, he was like, I I get it, you know, I was like, you you don't, you don't know anything, because it's not long, you know. Give us till March seventeenth, um, you know, go watch the videos, get as involved as you want, you know, but don't worry, we're not. You know, we're coming to the cultural heritage commission, we will, we will be there.
We'd wanna share one thing.
Yeah, please.
That we learned.
What did we learn?
We learned. We've always thought that that community room was the Carnegie Library. It's not. They tore down the Carnegie Library when they built this building. That's the nineteen thirties add-on to Carnegie Library. It's still been designated as a cultural landmark, but it is not the original Carnegie Library. They they tore that thing down, and there's nothing left.
Wow. Which, I mean.
Don't tell me.
Certain people have been, certain people have been promoting that it is, you know, that that it just isn't, but that's been a narrative that's been out there.
It has been the narrative that we we thought.
But it's, it's, and they just sever that through their religion, so.
No.
We we learned it, we all thought it was the Carnegie, Kathy's like, no.
In fact, we had during our project management.
I think it's important that people know that, because.
Yeah.
There there is a group of people that are um, a former president of this body, uh, who every time I talk to him about it, says.
That's nervous.
Uh, well, no, it's just, well, why would you build anything that doesn't look exactly like what we already, well, because. Very heavy, it's kind of ugly. Um, uh, but we're building for the next fifty years, not the last fifty years.
Um.
It's like saying if we had the choice to revisit City Hall, we wouldn't. Let's build it exactly the same.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a tricky, you know, trying to combine new and old in the site.
I think group, I think group four already has a good handle on that concept.
Something out. Uh, yeah, we'll see how they can make the best use of that space. The um, so one of the subcontractors with group four is um Paige and Turnbull, they're a historic preservationist architectural firm. So we got a little preview of the work they've been doing. It was really fun, you know, they had sandborne maps from, which, I mean, I've not seen, I mean, I've seen a lot of stuff and found, and we dug up, we have a lot of stuff. But I'd never seen the sandborne maps from nineteen ten or whatever, so it was fun. So they're doing all their, you know, finding things out, um, and that'll, they'll, they'll give a little bit of that in the public meeting. To kind of, right, explain to people, here is what used to be here. And and really, I mean, they have a very kind of structured, methodical thing that they're doing, which is they literally are identifying. What is, what has a certain significance and what doesn't, even down to like the pathways, right? Like, so the pathways that we have now are not have historical significance, or this tree, or this whatever. So, um, and and they, you know.
Yes, everyone has made a very big deal out of, if if we even hint that the Morton fig could be on the chopping block, the project's dead.
Potentially, yeah, but but I think, well, they're gonna keep looking into it. Um, but, you know, it's not from that nineteen thirties era. And there's also a lot of uh, the story about that that was planted by so-and-so, and it's 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 a little bit. There's not a lot of documentary.
One thing I I still don't recall, I I would swear that there was a presentation of a cultural landmark status to that tree.
Yeah, we did it in twenty nineteen eighteen.
So, so the tree. So, so the tree itself already is.
Cultural Heritage Landmark. But, but what that actually, I mean, I haven't looked at the municipal code, that's their job, but you know, somebody looks at that to be what exactly, you know, if you're on the. City Cultural Heritage Landmark list, what does that mean in terms of what can you do or not do? The same way as if you're on the National Register, there's certain places you have things you can and can't do. Um, I'm guessing that the city cultural heritage register is, is prudent as the mentioned store. That's their job though, they'll figure all that.
Whether, whether it has it or not, there, there's no way we can tell.
So we can, can we, we can table the rest of this maybe for next time we come together?
Yeah, yeah.
Or take it offline for more sessions? Um, but very exciting, you have a very, um, packed month between now and April. That's the week before this voluntary, but.
Not to mention. All of the other.
I'm sure there'll be a lot more updates and, um, do you have any other library operations updates? Kathy, anything we haven't talked about already?
The only thing I wanna tell you, which I don't know if I had told you, because I don't think it was finalized, is that we've hired our full-time children's librarian? Did I tell you that or not tell you that? I did, okay. So Letitia's first official day was the tenth, so she's our new full-time children's librarian. Sorry?
Who is it?
Uh, her name is Letitia Chengku. She has been with us, she came on, um. As like one of our substitute librarians, you know, working wherever we needed her pretty infrequently, cause she had a full-time job. In another industry, um, but she wanted to, you know, became a, like, did her library degree, um, kind of starting to try that out. When our, one of our part-time children's librarians position, which is a fixed eighteen-hour-a-week position versus, you know. Substitute librarian comes in on a Saturday, whatever, she, she, um, took the part-time eighteen-hour-a-week job. And I think in, in even then, she had to make the decision, am I gonna keep doing the job at, you know, my career that I've done for fifteen years? I'm gonna. Make this leap and go. So I think that when she took the part-time position, she left her full-time job at, I wanna say Warner. Um, so she's been doing that for I don't know how many, a year maybe, I'm not sure. Anyway, she applied for the full-time. Position and we interviewed a lot of the candidates, but, um, she was best. So we're super excited because, um. She's great, we already know she's great. She, she works really well with the rest of the team. I mean, we've really struggled. For four years at least on a, having a really strong cohesive public services team. Um, and this is just sailing, um, it's gonna be great. We're gonna be able to. Get a lot done and, and she's, I, I, she's great. And I probably, it's private information, but she's, she's a resident. Uh, she's got kids at school, so she's, you know, it's, it's a nice perspective. You know, maybe she'll work here like NADA for the next thirty years and we'll never have to hire another children's librarian. Um, so, yeah, which is just great. And one of these days I'll, uh, we'll create, I'll bring her up so I can introduce her to you guys. Um, and I don't, I honestly don't have any. Well, no, that's not true. Um, let me tell you one other thing. So I don't know if I've mentioned it before, um, but there's, um. A, a new state law about getting, uh, mandatory libraries partnering with schools. To get children from pre-K through third grade library cards. So that law was, um, uh, enacted and I, I wanna say in two thousand twenty-three. And we have to have that partnership sort of. In, up and running, or at least entered, entered into by like January twenty twenty-six. So we're in the process now of, um, we need to, we need to kind of get our ducks in a row, go to the school district. Have this conversation, um, and again, it's required everywhere, but. School districts often, you know, what's, I'm not gonna share our data, you know, so there's all this legal stuff. So the city attorney is kind of looking at some of that for us so that we can hopefully smooth that way and that conversation, um. But this is gonna be a big initiative that takes a lot of time and energy. The other thing the city attorney has to kind of figure out. I tried to get the state librarian to, to tell me, but they were very. They wouldn't say, like, they wouldn't interpret the law and tell me, tell us what to do. So the city attorney's looking at it. As to whether or not the expectation is that. All students, so basically the first year, we have to give K or pre-K through third grade. But then, and then the third graders become fourth graders, but what if new kids transfer in? To fourth grade? Now do I have to give the fourth grade? Like, we're not, we're trying to figure that piece out. Or do we just every year? You do all the new pre, you know.
So the requirement is that every enrolled student must have a library card. It just seems like it's, it's something that we, the city puts in place with the school district to say, everyone who comes into the district. They sign a bunch of papers, one of the things they're required to do is on your state law.
Um, well, I mean, the, the library, the library, the law is that libraries have to make it happen. School districts do not, right? So the, the burden is on the library. If the school district just refuses to do it, then that's, who knows what happens, but. I mean, it's, it's great, it's a win-win. I mean, I think that the, the law, the way that it's written. It says much about making a statement about education and that state across the state, the government, the government, the governor. Has a commitment to literacy, libraries, schools, so you know, it's sort of a, it's a messaging thing a little bit. And it's, and it's true, they wanna make sure. Now, in this town, although I'm surprised, we, we were like, all the kids already have library cards, you know? We are, they are, they don't actually. So we looked at the numbers, a lot of kids do not have library cards.
Yeah, we have a new, we have a new superintendent coming in. Great opportunity to dive in at the beginning.
Yeah, so, so we're working on that. I mean, the, the hope is that we can pull it off, that, you know. We would get all the stuff figured out now and be able to do cards for the fall. Um, but you know, we have to, they have to share data with them and we have to follow the, whatever the federal education. Privacy stuff and, um, technologically, you know, how are we gonna get that information into our system?
I'm just guessing the state did not provide any funding.
No, they didn't even provide, like, the state librarian said, okay, cause they basically, the state librarian has to make sure we all do this, right? So they're in this role of trying to help us do it. They're getting very panicky. They're like, who's done it? Have you done it? Have you checked all the resources? We have a working group now, because I think a lot of people are, you know, it's, it's hard and you don't. And some people are in, like, if you're in Altadena, you're not associated with a school district, the school district is, you know, you know, like, there's different communities where it's tricky. Anyway, um, no, they didn't even give him enough money to like hire staff specifically to run the program, but they're doing a great job. I mean, there's tons of. They've done a great job, the website has a ton of information, um. So that's happening and it's pretty important and we'll be posting us that goes along. And I think that that's from library operations, that's all I have. I do have one little thing under library director when we get there.
Great, thank you. So communications, nothing from me, but, um, anyone, man, did you wanna share anything?
I, I just wanted to say that, again, I went to this library after dark, uh, program that they did at, uh, the downtown. Uh, main branch of the LA Public Library. And it was phenomenal, we didn't know a lot about it, I've since learned. Uh, actually, in the, in the recap, we saw a little recap video that it is the first time they did it, there were three thousand people there, like being in Disneyland on a crowded day. Um, there were lines, but it, it just was, I would encourage you all to go and look at. The, the main branch of the public library in an aspirational viewpoint, so that when we're thinking about policy programs. And whatnot that we're, uh, working to implement here, maintain, that we can obviously. Honestly, it's on a scale that we can't fathom, but. There's lots of ideas that we can glean from that, so.
I talked to the deputy director today and about, you know, cause Gua Rocky said, oh, let's go there, um.
That's pointless.
What's that?
I think it's kind of pointless to go there looking at this level, but.
Well, no, that, I talked to Susan Broman and she said, yeah, what we'll do is like focus on like you guys did, like the upgraded Butler Lab. And the teen space now has like a sensory special spot, you know? So she said, yeah, you're not just gonna come and look at the rotunda, right? We're gonna try to show, you know, show you these pieces that actually might. Have this relevance back to what you're doing, um, so, so hopefully well.
But it might be an interesting thing to think about for the future of doing something on a, a smaller scale, because what was really lovely about this was. Where you're in this space that you think of as a library, but there were all these other. Things taking place there that is exactly what we're thinking about for this larger community-centered concept. There were musical performances, dance performances, uh, uh, interactive. Like people walking through in costume, playing instruments, uh, we did a figure drawing class, uh. Uh, there was examples in the maker space, we could do, uh, screen printing and things like that. So, you know, on a smaller scale, we could do that kind of event here, you love it.
Smoothed space, in the right kinds of space, that's what this whole music supplement piece is about.
That's, thank you.
Ed, did you want to share?
Uh, it actually kind of follows along with what Dean was talking about. Earlier in the week, they, the LA Public Library had their. Libraries of the Future discussion. And they were very much hyping the thing on Friday and I, now I really wish I had, had done it. But in, in some ways, that discussion was disappointing. They talked a lot about what that LA Public Library is doing now and it's fabulous. Because they do have, you know, resources and it's a very large organization. They didn't really talk about the future of libraries much, about the only thing they got into were kind of the security things. That we're talking about here. One thing I think is interesting is that the, uh, Pacific Palisades branch of the LA Public Library burned down. And as the director talked about it, he was saying, during the pandemic, we had to find different ways. To give library services. And now those muscles that we developed back then are being, you know, we're exercising them again. He was specifically referring to Pacific Palisades and delivering library services where they had, they don't have a building anymore. But it's, um, it was worth going to, I just wish they talked a little bit more about future. That's what it was supposed to be about.
You know, like, like you said, though, a big library like that, you know, they bought, um, Angeles. You know, like they have their own press now, like they have the, the, the resources and the intellectual kind of capacity to just. Do all these things that are amazing, but not. What we would do, like we're a library.
But I, I, I think Dean is exactly right, that on a smaller scale. We have the opportunity and we have the vision, I think, in this body to be able to do that kind of stuff. Um, so, a- actually, I was a little surprised by this, that twenty twenty-six. Will be the one hundredth birthday of the LA Public Library. Yeah, seems like it would have been. We, we beat them, yeah, 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 so. It's worth doing. Um, and I have a question mostly for Kathy is. The, that American Library Association thing that I went to, went to online, is that an annual thing?
Um, I don't know if they're doing it annually, but I will find out. I'm actually, I was just trying to renew my membership and I'll, I'm gonna, um. Pay for the subgroup that's whatever, United for Libraries, which is the, you know, the interest group for trustees and foundations. So then I'll get all that information and be on top of it and not just hope I see it. Do you remember what time of year that was?
I'm trying to, I, I think it's like May or June.
Later.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if they're doing it every year, but we'll find out.
But that, that was very valuable, um, the serving with a purpose thing, which I. Wasn't too gung ho about last year, I'm not sure I would do it, okay?
I agree. I know, I, like, I, I felt a little conflicted asking my board, being like, hey, if you wanna go.
You might not like it.
It did seem very kind of corporate-y, I don't know. Buy this elastic book membership. That's kind of what it seemed like, yeah.
Couple of years ago, people came back, went to it and were like, actually, I think you went to it a couple of years ago too. It was underwhelming. Well, sometimes it, it's great and these last couple weren't so hot. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Um, city council is about here, so friends of library, Kevin, do you have any updates?
No, nothing really big, I, you know, there's gonna be some decisions at our next board meeting, hopefully about. Few little things, like we're updating some of our signage, hopefully around the library, just simple operational things. We're looking and getting some emails for our organization, so people aren't getting personal email addresses. So it's kind of like some smaller operational things like that, um, nothing, nothing really big, yeah.
Thank you for the feedback too, I'm counting for the event.
And I was like, let's do it Thursday, it'll be your meeting and then I was like, never mind, let's not do it Thursday, so I kind of.
It made sense though, once, cause we all know what it's like to try to work for an eight-person meeting on a Thursday, you know? A hundred volunteers, sounds like a nightmare.
Great thing about South Pasadena. Um, trustee Lee, which I think is you, Dean?
So, uh, as we know. The, the friends raises a lot of money, provides a lot of, uh, services, including the wonderful bookstore that we have. Um, and they somehow make money off of selling fifty cent books. Uh, it, it's really astounding, um. Being at their meeting, I'd never actually been to one before, they have a very robust program. Uh, they have a series of, of committees and subcommittees that are working very diligently, they're very professional. Um, they're managing their, their resources very well. Uh, which, and those resources are quite a bit, I mean, I think you, it's in, they were over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. You know, from last year into this year, um, they're working on, uh, they're going to be, uh, working on replacing, helping us replace or return it. Instead of two of, I think, twenty thousand dollars. Um, they're helping us with some nicer tables for the community room, uh, to a cost of about eighteen thousand dollars. You know, these are services that everyone uses the library, whether they know they're using the library or not, are using. Um, and it's, it's just really lovely, but more than anything, I was really impressed by the, um, the professionalism. Uh, the structure, uh, the, um, feeling of community and civility. Uh, cause there's a lot of moving parts and a lot going on there, so I really want to commend you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Uh, a, a wonderful organization, um, uh, they, they do those restoration concerts. Um, we just had one recently, uh, it was very good. Uh, one of these days I'm actually gonna get to one. And, uh, yeah, so, well done.
Thank you. We have an amazing team. We're glad to have you on it, Dean.
Thank you for representing us too. Uh, library director communications.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring up one thing and this is something that Ed brings up often, which is how do we, how can you help advocate, right, for libraries? And of course, in our little climate and our funding climate, um, you know, the state library, uh. The California State Library Services Board, they wanna slash that budget, um, so there's a lot of stuff going on. So I'm starting to get a lot of, um, you know, here, help us, write this letter, submit your thing. So I'm thinking that I will just forward those to you guys. Um, so for example, this is from, uh. It's from Carol Frost, oh, it's from, um, one of the. You know, we have the Southern California Library Cooperative, there are like eight, nine, eight cooperatives, so she's from one of the cooperatives. Preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six state budget still includes a fifty percent reduction of CFL SA funds of the California Library Services Act. And that's what funds, um, the SCLC and, um, a lot of shared resources, so like Press Reader.
What percentage of our budget is it?
It's not really our budget, it's, so the way that the state structure works is there's the California, it's, it's all in, in law, but there's this. The California Library Services Act creates the California Library Services Board. And these cooperatives that are, you know, throughout the state. So basically, the state funding goes through the California Library Services Board. Down to the, um, the cooperatives and the idea behind the law, which I forget what year, seventy-something. The idea was to equalize, um, library services for everyone. So, you know, we happen to live in a community that has resources, so we have this, this and this, but another community then doesn't have. So the idea was, let's make a baseline of library services for, for everyone in the state. So that's the idea is that they're sharing money so that we can, um, share resources. Like they don't just say, here, you have your money. We're supposed to be working together to, to make the most of these shared resources. But of course, in our area, it's very hard because in SCLC is. Us and the county of Los Angeles library, right? So their needs, right? Like they're just, they just, they just are in it to be supportive, right? Like, it's not benefiting them the way it benefits us. They already had Press Reader. We now get Press Reader, so, so it's just, it's hard to find a shared resource when the library. We now get Press Reader. So so it's just, it's hard to find a shared resource when the libraries are so different and have such different needs. Anyway, it's not like, it doesn't really come like to us, but it provides resources that we then can provide to our our customers. So that's what that is. But so, it's a, it's a big deal, right? I mean, fifty percent, um, again, the meeting that I was at today was forty library directors from Southern California. We, you know, work together, we help each other, we learn from each other. I mean, it's it's really important, these cooperatives. So to make those work, you need these funds. So this is a call to, you know, reach out, whatever. So I'll forward this if anyone wants to. I mean, I don't think, you know, if we were making like a statement on behalf of the board, that'd be one thing, but as individuals, you certainly can send an email and say, you know, why we think it's important that that we continue this funding. So I'll come that out. I just wanted to bring that up, because I'm starting to get more of these. Uh, this is state, the federal Institute for Museum and Library Services budget, you know, it's just the the more we can encourage people to not forget about us, the better. Um, and that's it. That's all that I have.
Um, are there any public comments, Sean?
Uh, no.
Okay, great. With no further items or comments from staff or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-six. Then to our next meeting on April tenth at seven.
Thank you very much, everyone.